Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council this beautiful May 6th, 2025. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I started. Yeah, I know. So normally, we do just a standard moment of silence, but this evening, I'm going to do something a little bit different. I'd like to take a few moments to honor a special individual whose picture is on the wall hanging over there to my left. James Harold Howe Denny. He was born on May 13th, 1925, and we lost Howe on April the 10th, 2025. Howe was a council member from December of 1999 to October 2004. He was appointed mayor during that term, and then he went off council and then got back on council when he was elected mayor again in 2009 and served one four-year term then. Howe was a naval aviator, a retired U.S. Navy Reserve captain, a business consultant, and a volunteer. He contributed so much to our community, we want to express our heartfelt condolences to his wife, Billy, and the entire family. Thank you again. Counsel, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have any amendments to, or can I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. We have an approved agenda. Our consent agenda consists of three items on pages three through five in your packet: minutes, a fee schedule amendment, and a budget amendment. Can I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda, or do we need to have a discussion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mark.
As presented.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an approved consent agenda. Thank you. Now, we'll just move on to staff reports. First, we'll hear from our deputy town manager and planning director, Wes Haskett. Good evening, Wes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I have a brief report for you all tonight with respect to April permits. There were a total of 56 permits issued that consisted of eight zoning permits, 22 building permits, 25 trade permits, and one lot disturbance stormwater management permit. The total amount of fees collected by the planning department in April was $16,791.72. With respect to code enforcement in April, there were three warning citations mailed, one for a solid waste ordinance violation, one for a junk motor vehicle violation, and one for a fire code violation. With respect to the town planning board, their next regular meeting is scheduled for May 19th at 5:00 here in the Pitts Center. And this next item addresses a town code modernization direction. As you all can probably recall, at the February 6th, 2024 town council meeting, you all council directed town staff to draft town code amendments to modernize the town code. We town staff used that direction to draft several zoning text amendments to address changes in development trends and conditions, as well as legislative changes made by the N.C. General Assembly. Town staff is now requesting new direction from council to continue drafting town code amendments to modernize the town code so that we can continue preparing and recommending town code amendments when needed. One example currently is ZTA to reinstate guiding standards that must be satisfied prior to issuance of a special use permit, as recommended by the UNC School of Government. So I did want to bring this to you all's attention in my report tonight. If you all are inclined to provide this new direction to staff, we vote, or we recommend that you all take a vote tonight to do so.
Okay. Thanks, Wes.
Any questions?
Questions for Wes? Any discussion about staff request? Seems reasonable to me.
Perfect.
Can I hear a motion? I move that we ask staff to continue to prepare and recommend town code amendments when needed for the modernization of our code.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion dismissed. Thank you, Wes. Next, we'll hear from our police chief, Chief Cole.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The police department report for April 2025. As you can see in the pie chart, we had 1,365 calls for service. Some of those breakdowns, 697 of those were business checks where they're actually getting out and shaking and rattling doors. As far as incidents, which were crimes that were reported, we had a total of eight charges under that, one for a dispute, communicating threats of vandalism, one domestic, two drug-related, and one for drug paraphernalia, and one for fraud. Officers conducted 77 traffic stops for April. They handed out 10 written citations for a total of 18 charges, and another 58 warning citations for a total of 59 charges. There were four local ordinance failed to display, parking in the right of way, and we had four reportable motor vehicle accidents for the month of May. Any questions? Hopefully by next month, we'll have your annual report all ready for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Cole. Appreciate all you do to keep us safe, you and your staff. Next, we'll hear from our fire chief, Chief Limbacher. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Fully month of April. One fire, other, one structural fire, 48 medical calls, which now that you all have seen the assessment, you understand how that works. So it's fitting right in there with 65% of what we do. So two vehicle accidents with injury, one hazardous condition, three of our beach wheelchair program, two for our smoke detector program, one assist the police or government of agency, one assist invalid, two move up or standbys, five canceled en route, one where there was no incident found upon arrival, two smoke detectors activations, one CO, and two special types for a total of 73 for the month of April, and compares to last year at 76. So picking up now, that's the time of year, so typical. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and your staff for keeping us all safe. We appreciate you. All right. Now, we'll hear from our town manager, Cliff Alberg. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. A few things to discuss tonight. First, I'll talk about the Trinity Trail Bridge project and the progress there. I was out there about an hour ago and took two pictures, wanted to get as up-to-date pictures as I possibly could. And this is standing in the middle of the bridge. This is looking north. You can see that sidewalks have been poured, the curbs been poured, the paving contractor's going to start the first layer in the binder tomorrow. Then from there, it's a lot of smaller things that have to get done, the grading, the seeding, the paint marking, the rails. All of that will take place shortly thereafter, and we are still in line to have the bridge open by Memorial Day. So that's good news. And that is looking same spot turnaround looking north. So we're getting very close. Let's keep it short.
Really good news.
So I don't jinx it.
Great news.
Really good news.
The, I just wanted to take.
Really appreciate that.
Just briefly let you know that this past Friday, town staff helped the Southern Shores Civic Association and the Chickahaw Property Owners Association move out of this building and over to 13 Skyline. It was, well, relatively painless for those guys, as we may say different if you ask them. But I just wanted to, so far, we've had a few folks that have come looking. It'll take some time, I think, to get accustomed to that. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to let folks know if they're looking for either one of those offices, they're now at 13 Skyline. And when they come to town hall, we just kind of, if it's a nice day like today, they just walk over. So moving there. The renovations for the town, the front porch was pulled off Monday morning, so we're directing staff around to the back door right now, and visitors to the back door. We are waiting for the gas company to show up because they have to supervise the piles going in for the porch, even though the gas line's nowhere near that front door of the building. And so, you know, government gets things gummed up, so do others. So we use that as an example. So that's moving along. And then right after Memorial Day, we'll start the interior of the town hall remodel. The fire department, there's been a tremendous amount of work done by Sheila, Bonnie, the fire chief, his admin help in getting, really getting down into the weeds, making sure that on July 1st, we've got all of the assets transitioning over to be covered under our liability insurance, making sure that we've got the workman's comp, property liability, everything in place. One thing we know is that we're going to have to go to, well, I'll go just tell on government now. The town's been paying the debt service on the fire department since the inception, but we pay the fire department, who then in turn pays the bank. We're now going to be paying the bank directly. So we have to go to the local government commission to get the approval, the okay for us to write that check now directly to the bank. That's going to require a process. We'll ask for a public hearing, I think in June. We are going to plan to be on the August Local Government Commission agenda. The loan's paid up through September, so we've got some time. So we don't need to rush it. We'll get it done. The North Carolina League of Municipalities has verified that everything will be insured on July 1. There'll be a new 501(c)(3) formed for the Southern Shores Volunteer Support Organization. There'll be kind of an auxiliary that's going to be there to make sure the volunteers are well taken care of and that we continue to make sure that they have the rightful place and that they're front and center in a lot of regards. The fire real estate, the fire service real estate, 501(c)(3) will actually need to stay intact because they're actually the ones that are holding the ground lease both to the bank for the new station and the bank at East, or to the county on East Dogwood. So we will need to keep them in place kind of as a landlord. Any questions? I wanted to show.
Will the ground lease eventually revert to the town?
Well, the day that the building, all the assets revert.
Right.
The reason we're keeping that in place is so it makes it less cumbersome for the town to become the exclusive right user of these facilities. It's just one less layer that we don't have to unwind.
Okay.
But the building will be ours.
Right.
And we'll just assume that ground lease.
But that lease is between the city and the new 501(c)(3).
Correct.
The new one or?
Well, no, no, no.
The existing fire state real estate services.
It'll be the fire real estate, fire service real estate will lease it to the town, will lease the building from fire real estate.
And then if.
The new 501(c)(3) won't have operational management responsibility.
If interest rates retreat, which then the idea would be to refinance and unwind that, correct?
Yeah. That'd be the time to do it.
And then the East Dogwood is between?
The county.
County and the same nonprofit.
Right. Okay.
So it's just easier on paper to leave it be, is kind of what you're saying?
That's right.
Okay.
I think a couple of weeks ago now, there was a video of the improvements of the cemetery and the cemetery in general. So I just wanted to take a minute to show you all that.
Surrounded by dogwood and towering pine trees, the Southern Shores Cemetery is a special feature of the town of Southern Shores. A municipal cemetery, it lies just north of the Duckwoods Country Club.
This cemetery is centrally located in town. It's a very quiet, meditative spot. There are people who like to come here and walk and sit, and some that have family members buried here, some not.
This is literally one of my favorite places in town. It's got a lot of natural beauty. It's got a lot of history.
For more than 125 years, the community has laid their loved ones here. In the northeast corner of the property, four members of the O'Neill family have been laid to rest. Sidney Green O'Neill was 61 years old when she passed away in 1892. The Julian Onetto Tomb is the only structure in the cemetery, and it predates the incorporation of the town. The tomb, according to a 1980 letter to Mayor Kern Pitts, the town's first elected mayor, explains how the Onetto Tomb came to be a part of the cemetery. Quote, "When the people in Kitty Hawk objected to the Julian Onetto Tomb in Austin Cemetery, we had the grave moved here."
So it's a lovely spot in the middle of town, and we need to cherish and improve it the best we can. It's also a lovely place to showcase our local zeliers, our dogwoods. My son is a Marine Corps veteran, and he and I came here for Memorial Day service, which our local veterans put on, and it's lovely. But when my son and I were here, we looked around and we thought, wow, the cemetery looks pretty shabby and dark and no grass. The benches were kind of falling apart. So shortly after that, I talked to our mayor, Elizabeth Maury, about what we might do to improve the cemetery.
So all the proceeds from conveying individual plots to people for either themselves or their family members goes into a specific fund, and the monies in that fund are restricted that they only can be used for the benefit of the cemetery.
So one of the first things we wanted to do was to get some input from the community about what we could do to improve the cemetery. We also had a local resident whose young daughter had recently died, and she's been a real force in encouraging us to improve things. So I met individually and in small groups with about 25 local residents, all of whom own plots here, most of whom had people buried here. And we just looked around and said, what do you think would make good improvements here?
When we made the decision to dip into the restricted fund for the cemetery, we had a few top-line items we wanted to try to improve.
There were big stretches of the cemetery that were nothing but dirt.
We purchased a water tap from the county, so we are now able to water the grass seed when we put grass seed in the ground. We did some tree removal and some tree limbing and improvement because we needed a little bit more sunlight so we could have better grass cover.
We have dogwoods here on the cemetery that are over 100 years old. And what's great is, after trimming them a little bit, some of them are blooming for the first time, I think, in quite a while. And one of our plans is to keep replenishing the dogwoods on Dogwood Trail.
We have a brand-new sign that's angled better for people as they drive by.
The benches were one very quick fix.
There had always been a gravel path, which had been mostly sand and some gravel, depending on how long it had been since any maintenance had been done. We've got something that has that appearance of pebbles, but is actually solid. It's also safe for people when they bring their cars in here and they want to get out.
This is kind of a personal cemetery. It has a lot of meaning for local residents, so we don't want to be really restrictive in what they do. On the other hand, we have to look at the maintenance issues, and it has to be easy to cut grass and keep things maintained. Many people think that the town put all the lights on the cemetery. We did not. One of our residents, who has a very loved one buried here, put solar lights out. The feedback we got from the community is, they loved it. It looks very beautiful at night, and so we're just leaving it alone. You have to consider the community you're in, and our residents want this to be a community cemetery, not, you know, a municipal cemetery. So we've tried to go with that while still keeping in mind the needs of our maintenance people who are trying to keep this neat. Another great thing is our local Eagle Scout troop has agreed to come in here and clean up all of the gravestones this spring. No charge, just total volunteer work, and we're very grateful for that.
This has always been a favorite place of mine, and what we've done is just made it better.
Information about the Southern Shores Cemetery can be found via QR code at the cemetery or online. People will find information in locating the locations of their loved ones and learning what lots are available for purchase. We're proud of our Southern Shores Cemetery. We know that for the families of loved ones, there is someone very special to them here. We will always keep that in mind.
Yay. Thank you, Cliff. Town attorney, any report from, oh, there she is, Lauren. Hey, welcome.
Good evening. As you know, I'm here for your regular attorney, Phil Horenthal, and he did not send any report. But if you have any questions or anything you need him to report on next year, let me know. I'll be happy to carry that back to him.
Great. Thanks, Lauren. Next is general public comment. Is anyone signed up? Oh, looks like someone would like to come up. Come on up, Leo.
I did. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Leo Holland. I live at 23 Spindrift Trail. I was asked to comment tonight about our Memorial Day ceremonies, not only here, but also around the county. The first one, of course, it's May 26, and our first ceremony is here in our own Southern Shores Cemetery, and it begins at 8:30. The American Legion Post 26 will be performing the ceremony. Now, yes, it is early, but they have got about seven or eight places they need to be. But I want to encourage everybody here in Southern Shores, not only to come to attend this ceremony, but it's an opportunity to see the things that have been done to improve the cemetery. So you can get two for, get the both of them done at one time. But it looks very good, and I want to compliment everybody because I did drive over there to make sure what I was looking at. And since they'll have a couple others after that, then they have a ceremony in Manio at around 11:30, 12:00. The Knights of Columbus will be participating in that one. And then we go from there to Kill Devil Hills. So those will be the ceremonies for Memorial Day. But if some of you remember, at one time, we knew it as Decoration Day, and it was a floating holiday. But in my family, it was a ritual. Every year, we made the rounds to the cemeteries. And in some instances, the churches had ceremonies along with the military. So it's a tradition. It's been a long time. I'm not going to go into the history. That's take more than my three minutes here. So anyhow, I just want to encourage everybody to come out specifically here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I believe that's our only person signed up for public comment. So moving on on our agenda, there's nothing under old business. So we have new business, and I think we'll start out with number four, which is on page six of your packet. Counsel and Cliff is going to talk to us.
Thank you. This is just a continuation of the pavement plan that we put together a few years back. As you know, we started out with patching, but we've kind of moved more towards a systematic approach of trying to address the worst streets first and tackling other streets in close proximity to those areas so that we can save on mobilization. If we ticked off every street in order, we'd be all over town, and that would not be cost-effective. So we paved a lot of the streets around Spindrift, except for Spindrift. So the Wild Pony has not been paved either, and so what we're asking for is that you all would allow me to enter into a contract with a low bid. We received three bids to pave almost all of Spindrift, down to about the 11th, right to the cul-de-sac, all of Wild Pony and Landfall Loop. We had three bids. We got one from Fred Smith, one from Barn Hill, and one from C.D. Rose. They were all very close. One was 15, the low bid was $15,000 from the next, and that was $9,000 from the next. They were relatively close bids. And we can start this project. The notice of award, I think we can start within a couple of weeks. So there'll be a window of time, but we can get, I think we can get this one started pretty quick.
So I was going to ask, what's the approximate length of road improved?
This is about one and a quarter miles, 1.22, I think.
And it seems like over the years, we've had some stormwater issues on Spindrift. Do you have something incorporated to address some of those?
There's a issue around the 50 block of Spindrift that we're going to address. It's going to be stormwater in nature, but it'll be a lot of kind of grading of the pavement grading slope of the road to try and take care of an issue there.
And then we've had some individuals in town ask about the section of East Dogwood that continues to be kind of a.
Right.
Bumpy ride. So what's the plan for?
Right now, the town engineer is, that's going to be a more involved, I don't know if I'd call it a full-depth rebuild, but it's probably pretty close. Engineer's going to have to put some work into that. That's, we're planning on doing that as a fall project. I do have that included in the manager's recommended budget for next year.
Very good.
And that would be from the bottom of the hill to the Dick White Bridge.
Okay. Other questions from council for Cliff regarding the pavement project? Okay.
This is all part of the annual funding that we do for roads.
Yes. Yes, sir. I think we're up to about $4 million in the last four years.
Right.
And we will have spent $2 million between this year and next year combined.
Right. Go ahead.
No, sorry. I thought you were finished, Mark. Apologies.
No, just it's part of what was it, $7 or $8 million plan? I can't remember.
$10 million.
$10 million.
Yes, sir.
Over 10 years, that's what it was, yeah. The 10-year upgrade for the whole.
10-year, $10 million, yes, sir.
And $20, $20.
Yeah. Today's dollar.
Pre-pandemic prices.
I'll make a motion to authorize town manager enter contract with Fred Smith for the amount of $280,670 for pavement construction.
And I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. We have an approved project bid award.
Thank you.
Next, under new business, is a public hearing, and at this point, I would like to hand the microphone over to our attorney, Lauren Womble, to handle our public hearing for us.
All right. Thank you.
Micron over to our attorney, Lauren. Micphone over to our attorney, Lauren Womble. Handle our public hearing for us.
Mr. Mina, can you hear us?
Yes, again.
Okay. So, good evening. We... On this agenda item, you can have a public hearing scheduled for a proposed ETA. As you know, a hearing... A public hearing on a proposed ETA is a legislative hearing. And so pursuant to NCGS 160A-81, the board is permitted to adopt rules of procedure for the legislative hearings. For instance, to assign the maximum amount of time allotted to each speaker. You can have the designation of a spokesperson for a group or opposition or in support of a ETA. You can provide for rules of decorum and maintenance, maintaining order in the meeting. And so before we enter this public hearing, I want to address those with the board and give you an opportunity to establish any rules for this proceeding that you would like. I know that the board has recently adopted rules of decorum for public comment, so I think those would already be applicable. But in regards to alluding time limit to parties who want to... Individuals who want to participate, that will be in your discretion regarding tonight's proceeding. So is there a time limit you would like to assign? The legal standard is that it's a reasonable time limit, such that those who want to have input have a reasonable amount of time to convey their position. And so that is in your discretion.
Okay.
It's 10 minutes, a fair amount of time.
I think that 10 minutes is a fair time. Do we have the sign-up sheets? Want to make sure. Is there anybody... No, okay. I don't know that there's anybody else signed up. One of the considerations is how many people are signed up. This public comment time periods range, like your normal period of three minutes and up to a signed number. So I think 10 minutes is probably fine. I don't think there's anybody else signed up. So I think 10 minutes is a reasonable number.
I'd like to give them a little more time than normal. I'll make a motion to limit the public comment to 10 minutes during this ETA here.
Okay.
Public hearing.
Second motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. So this time, we will open the public hearing, and I will invite staff to come forward and give their report.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Womble, and good evening again, mayor and council members. This next agenda item is ZTA-25-02. The applicant is Anthony S. Mina, and the requested action is Amendment of Town Code, Section 36-414. You all were provided a staff report and some additional materials. I am going to read the staff report into the record. You all were given this. It was posted on the website. The applicant is proposing a zoning text amendment to amend Town Code, Section 36-414, to establish a 90-day exemption for property owners in all zoning districts to submit any applications to the town to seek governance under the Town Code prior to all ordinance amendments adopted within three years of adoption of his proposed amendment. If adopted, property owners would be permitted to submit applications for a 90-day period to seek governance from the town under the Town Code as it applied prior to adoption of all zoning text amendments that affected their property within the last three years. The proposed language would apply to property owners who own the property, were under contract to purchase the property, rented the property, or occupied the property at the time the zoning text amendment was adopted. In July 2024, the applicant submitted two applications to subdivide the property at 75 East Dogwood Trail that were denied. In October 2024, the Town Planning Board considered a variance application submitted by the applicant to allow the subdivision of 75 East Dogwood Trail that was denied. In January 2025, the applicant submitted another request to subdivide the property at 75 East Dogwood Trail that was denied. In March 2025, the Planning Board considered an appeal application submitted by the applicant to allow the subdivision of 75 East Dogwood Trail that was denied. The proposed amendment is an attempt to exempt himself and other affected property owners from having to comply with the lot with requirements established in ZTA 2303 that was adopted on June 6, 2023. Staff's recommendation is that town staff has determined that the proposed amendment is inconsistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan and town staff recommends disapproval of the application. Please note that prior to adopting or rejecting any zoning amendment, the town council shall adopt a statement describing whether its action is consistent or inconsistent with the town's currently adopted comprehensive land use plan and explaining why the town council considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest. That statement is not subject to judicial review. Since all of the zoning text amendments that were adopted within the last three years were found to be consistent with the town's comprehensive land use plan, formerly known as the town land use plan, creating an exemption from having to comply with their requirements would be inconsistent with the town's comprehensive land use plan. The ZTA does not identify any comprehensive land use plan policies that are consistent with the proposed amendment. The Town Planning Board unanimously, 5-0, recommended disapproval of the proposed amendment at the May 21, 2025 Planning Board meeting, and they found that their action to recommend disapproval was consistent with the town's currently adopted comprehensive land use plan, and it was reasonable and in the public's interest. That concludes the staff report. I'll also note that staff also included in your packets a list of ZTA's adopted since May 1, 2022. All of these, if you all were to adopt this amendment, would become null and void for up to three years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So now we will call on Mr. Mina, the applicant. He is attending by Zoom. And Mr. Mina, can you hear us?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. So as you heard earlier, you have 10 minutes to share your comments with the board regarding this zoning text amendment. The agenda packet was previously provided to the board. They have pages... Specifically, pages 7 through 55 include all of the items that you previously submitted, which they've had and have had an opportunity to review. Would remind you that the rules of decorum require that you refrain from personal attacks or and/or threats directed towards town staff, elected officials, or members of the public. And if you go down that route, I will redirect you to stick to the zoning text amendment and your proposed language that you'd like added to the ordinance. So if you want to... The clerk is going to start the timer, and you have 10 minutes.
May I read my entire thing into the record, please? Like Wes Haskett, right into the record?
You have 10 minutes to share whatever you want to with the board within the rules of decorum.
All right. The first thing I would like to say is, my name's Anthony Mina. I am a property owner in Southern Shores, and I am not a friend, colleague, client, partner, student, or have any other relationship with any Southern Shores employee, board members, police officers, or any other attorney. Me and my fiancee also do not have any agreements under seal of court or agreements made with power or attorney involving anyone working for Southern Shores, their boards, or their law firms they use. If you have an agreement with me or my fiancee, your agreement is based on fraud. Today, I am presenting a case for a zoning text amendment because the town of Southern Shores has amended zoning codes without complying with Town Code 36414B. Would you please put evidence, Exhibit 1, on the screen for me, please, Ms. Kane?
So the board has the... All your exhibits in their agenda packet, so that you can direct them to turn to Exhibit 1. They've got them in front of them.
Okay, Exhibit 1. And I'd like the public to see what you're trying to... How you're fraudulently misrepresenting the zoning code. So if you could put Exhibit 1 on the screen so the public could see what I'm talking about, give a not-good idea what their town has been doing to them by misrepresenting Town Code 36414B.
Okay. The agenda packet was available online for the public, and they are working on pulling it up. But you should continue because your time is running.
Town Code 36414B says, "In addition, and where zoning map amendment is proposed, the town shall cause to be placed a sign on the subject property announcing the date, time, and place of the public hearing for the purpose of notifying persons of the proposed rezoning." The words "and where," after "in addition," do not say "if." So that means posted notice was required to amend Lot With Requirement on June 6, 2023, which Wes Haskett did not do. As you can see from the evidence in support of my proposed Town Code amendment, Wes Haskett also did not comply with Town Code 36362B, which requires mailed notice to property owners prior to the Planning Board's hearing on a Lot With Amendment. You also find Exhibit Evidence Number 3, an email from Wes Haskett refusing to respond to notification of property owners of the March 31 Lot With Amendment on June 12, 2023, when he was asked how was notification done. I have included public records requests proving that notification requirements were not met. At 4 and 5, I've also included public records requests proving that Southern Shores does not even have a record of the properties that they were supposed to notify prior to amending the zoning code on June 6, 2023. Number 9 of my evidence is four emails from Wes Haskett proving Wes Haskett hid the March 31, 2023 Lot With Amendment in May of 2023, after being specifically asked on May 1, 2023, "Can you please tell me anything that would prevent me from subdividing the 75 East Dogwood Trail lot so I can build it another house?" The reason this is a very important fact is I was in the process of negotiating with the sale price of the previous owner for my property, and he negotiated an additional $75,000 from me for a lot that I've proven was subdividable. Now, Wes Haskett hid the Lot With Amendment from me for the entire month of May as these negotiations were taking place, and there was supposed to be posted notice outside of 75 East Dogwood Trail, where I was going on a regular basis to look at the property and do inspections and things like that. So in addition to not meeting requirements for... To make an amendment, he also was hiding the amendment in emails to me that... And allowing the previous owner to get an additional $75,000 from me, who was also contacting Wes Haskett about the lot subdivision and communicating with Wes Haskett through her realtor off the record, which I've proven with public records requests. At the Planning Board hearing, which they just said did not recommend my zoning text amendment, I was not allowed to present the evidence in support of the proposed Town Code Amendment 36414B, which I'm telling you about now, which violates North... Or I'm sorry, federal tampering with evidence law, 18 U.S.C. 1512B, which prohibits knowingly using intimidation, threats, or corruptly proceeds another person or attempts to do so, or engaging in misleading conduct towards another person with intent to influence, delay, or prevent the testimony of any person in an official proceeding, or to cause or induce any person to withhold testimony or withhold a record document or other object from an official proceeding. So in addition to all the fraud that I've included in the evidence of proposed Town Code Amendment 36414B, you also have their actions at the Planning Board hearing in April 21, 2025, violating federal tampering with witness laws. And I believe they're also subjected to racketeering, influence, corrupt organization laws because of how many properties in Southern Shores are owned by out-of-state properties, how much interstate commerce is affected by their actions.
Mr. Mina, you're getting off track. You need to refocus to your zoning text amendment.
This is part of my zoning text amendment. If you look at paragraph...
Witness tampering and racketeering are not proposed language to be added to the zoning ordinance. So redirect to your zoning text amendment, please.
Statement Number 12 of my zoning text amendment application says, "This amendment is consistent with the town's code of ethics, and it is imperative, under North Carolina state and federal laws, protecting property owners' due process rights and their right not to be subjected to public corruption crimes committed by local governments." Where I'm going with this is I am asking Southern Shores to correct the wrongdoing because on Thursday, I have a hearing in federal court against Southern Shores where there is Rico or racketeering, influence, corrupt organization, civil remedies that district courts impose on people for doing the things Southern Shores is doing, which I will be asking for. So I would like you to correct the problem now, which is all proven in my evidence in support of Town Code, which goes on and on with evidence of fraud. There's also something very interesting that you should look at at number 8, where Wes Haskett changed the Lot With Amendment on June 6, 2023, and then on June 7, 2023, emailed me to tell me that he would be submitting it... That staff would be submitting a text amendment to allow pie-shaped and irregular-shaped lots, which completely contradicts the amendment that was made on June 6, 2023. One day after he submitted... After he changed the Lot With to require 100 feet from one side of the property to the other side of the property, he's telling me that town staff is submitting a pie-shaped lot.
Mr. Mina, you have about 1 minute left if you want to summarize or bring it to a closing.
Okay. I want to make sure that you completely understand Number 10, which says, "North Carolina law provides that a court must construe ambiguous terms against the draft to his Southern Shores." Ambiguous terms of contracts. So when you pay filing fees to Southern Shores, you establish a contract under law and Town Code. Southern Shores is trying... Or I'm sorry, Wes Haskett, Cliff Ogren, and their law firm is trying to say that there's an interpretation that Town Code 36414B that does not require posted notice. But besides the fact that there is not an interpretation that way using English language that is taught in public schools, at every public school in the United States of America, even if there was, the code would have to be in favor of the applicant and not Southern Shores.
All right.
So which would require you to correct the wrongdoing anyway.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mina.
And...
Your time is expired.
May I?
You can have about 20, 30 seconds to make your last statement there.
Do you have anything else to say? May I look at my documents since I wasn't planning on trying to present an hour's worth of work in 10 minutes?
Well, the board has had all of your documents in their packet, and they have reviewed it. And Page 7 to Page 55, so they've had the opportunity to thoroughly review everything that has been submitted. So you can have about 30 seconds to make your final statement.
Okay. My final statement would have to be regarding the Town Code of Ethics, which is part of my packet and which said, "I will always obey the law and not try to in any way to influence application of the law by any of the town's authorities or personnel, and I will avoid and provide or the imperative variety of all my activities." and I will avoid and provide or the imperative variety of all my activities." Southern Shores is trying to give a zoning code a meaning that it doesn't have under, using English language. They have that old saying that leaders lead by example and not by force. Right now, up until this point, Southern Shores is trying to force the entire community to live under their lie that the words "and where" mean "if" in town code 36414B, and that's why property owners weren't notified the zoning amendments that reduced property value, probably totaling millions and millions of dollars in Southern Shores.
Thank you, Mr. Mina. That is all of your time. You've used your time and the extra time at this point. Thank you. The board has your agenda packet item. Is there?
Thank you.
There's no, no one else who signed up. Is there anyone who is in attendance tonight who did not sign up previously, although now desires to give any comment during this public hearing on this agenda item? All right. Given that there is no one else signed up at this time and no one else to give a presentation, we would close the public hearing and turn it over to the board for deliberation and decision.
Thanks, Lauren. Counsel, does anybody have any questions for Wes as regards to this zoning text amendment? Any questions for Lauren? No.
Nope.
Any discussion? So is there a motion to deny ZTA 2502 and affirm that our action of denying this proposed amendment is consistent with the town's currently adopted comprehensive comprehensive land use plan, that it also is reasonable and in the public's interest?
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motions, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, say no. We have a, we have a motion. We have, we have a decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the manager's recommended budget, which is going to be presented by Cliff. I believe we, we have a special book.
Special book.
That we were also presented with.
Before I get started, I just wanted to reiterate something to everyone, and that is that Wes Haskett has the full support of myself and all town staff, which he has had since the day he started some 14 years ago. Wes applies the town code. He administers the responsibility of his job with integrity, with honesty, and he's about one of the most ethical people that I know. And so I just want to let everyone know that Wes has done nothing wrong, and we are very thankful and very lucky to have Wes with us.
Thank you, Cliff. Appreciate that.
So presented for your consideration is the town manager's recommended budget for fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. This budget has been prepared in accordance with the North Carolina Local Government Fiscal Control Act as required by North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 159-11. This budget results from a great deal of hard work from all staff. I want to thank town clerk Sheila Kane, deputy manager Wes Haskett, finance officer and human resources director Bonnie Swain, fire chief Ed Limbacher, police chief David Cole, and public works director David Bradley for all of their hard work. As we all know, this is a revale year for property owners in Dare County, and the primary purpose of revale mandated by North Carolina is to align, North Carolina law is to align property assessments with their fair market value, which is the most likely selling price in a competitive and open market. Since property values do not fluctuate uniformly, regular revaluations ensure that the assessed values reflect current market conditions, preventing disproportionate tax burdens on property owners. Property taxes in Dare County are derived from two key components, the assessed value of the property and the tax rate per $100 of value determined annually by elected county and municipal officials. GS 159-11E defines the revenue neutral rate as the rate that is estimated to produce revenue for the next fiscal year equal to the revenue that would have been produced for the next fiscal year by the current tax rate if no revaluation had occurred. A revenue neutral rate provides taxpayers with a benchmark against which they can compare a proposed post-revaluation tax rate. Published in a statement of the revenue neutral rate in the proposed budget for comparison purposes provides taxpayers with context responding to the governor Ford's proposed tax rate for the coming fiscal year. A four-cent tax increase is recommended in this year's budget submittal. Southern Shores has had some of the lowest tax rates in Dare County for several years. Since the last tax increase unrelated to beach nourishment in 2012, those services and cost have increased annually. Yeah. What I've, what I've done here is shown that the last tax increase, some, not all, but some of the services that the town provides, the cost in 2012 for sanitation, recycling, lemon branch, IT support, fire protection, ocean rescue, and legal services, in 2012, all of those services combined totaled at a cost of $827,634. Today, they've grown by $794,424 or almost doubling. The one thing I'll point out, that fire protection service, the reason it looks so big is because of the debt service, which is even at today's value is more than a penny on the county's, I mean, on the town's tax rate. That, that $794,424 is about 2.87 cents on today's tax rate. So what this shows you is that if, if we had, if you look at the orange line, that is tax rate without beach nourishment. 2012, it went up. It stayed flat since that time. In 2026, I'm proposing another increase. The blue line indicates what actually happened. If you look at consider beach nourishment, there was a tax increase that went in 2021 and it went up for the last four years. So what this shows is it kind of shows the importance of our main revenues, and that's property taxes, not property raxes. And so the blue line, the dark blue line at the top shows what the annual budget has done since that, that period of time. That big jump up in the current year is due to the Trinity Bridge. The, the white, blue line below that is a total of property, property taxes, occupancy, land transfer, and sales taxes, and so the gap is starting to show there. So what I wanted to take a moment to point out was if, if you take, I think the median home value in Southern Shores is close to 600 in 2000, or at least it was close to $600,200. If we look at what the revenue neutral tax rate is for the town of Southern Shores, point one, or 14.8 cents, and that includes beach nourishment, if you take $100 of value, multiply that by 14.8, you get $891.11. If we, if you approve a four-cent tax increase, the difference annually on that house would be $240, $20 monthly. And I've shown two other houses at $1 million and at $1.6 million, the difference goes up from $421, $648 a year. So the, so this shows our revenue by source, and you can see from 20, the dark blue on the far left shows you the, the revenues for ad valorem taxes in 2023. The big jump, of course, is what I'm recommending. Occupancy taxes recommended to go down some, but this shows again why I focus so much on those two revenues, because from there, there's, there's minimal revenue that we realize for restricted unrestricted permits and fees and other taxes, other revenues. So this occupancy, sales, and land transfer taxes, occupancy tax in this year's recommended budget decrease at 7.86 percent. Sales taxes projected to decrease by 2.75 cents, and land transfer taxes projected to remain flat. So a total decrease of these taxes in this year's budget revenue is 4.8 percent. So on, on page six, you'll see the budget, where the budget overview begins. This year's general fund budget totals $11,706,772, which is an increase of $1,011,63 or 9.45 percent from the adopted budget for 2425. The increase again there is because of the bridge. For multiple years now, it has been noted that a tax increase will likely be part of the following year's budget. Absent a four-cent tax increase in 2021 budget to generate the required revenue to pay for the beach nourishment project, the tax rate has not increased for over 12 fiscal years. One cent in ad valorem taxes now generates $277,875, and as I said, a tax increase of four cents is recommended. The budget keeps tax rates already established for beach nourishment debt service at the neutral, revenue neutral rate. And you can see this just illustrates the growth of our budget. It's actually down from what's requested, up from 2324, but again, if you take out the bridge, it, it's really kind of throws the numbers. This is a look at what's recommended for next year's budget in each one of our departments. You can see the, the increases there and decreases. Overall, 18 percent decrease with these. If the streets, bridges, and canals, it's down 60 percent. But if you were to take that entire line item out, our budget's actually up 17, in these expenditures, 17.97 percent. There is personnel, well, let me back up, I'm sorry. The department highlights, the admin administration is increase of $266,570. There is a public information officer funded at half a year. Planning actually has a decreased budget of $14,162. Police, the increase of $78,128 over the current year. Amended budget, and that's due with the addition of a police sergeant as recommended. Streets, bridges, and canals, the recommended budget includes $1 million funding for a more in-depth road project that we talked about for East Dogwood. Roadwork coupled with stormwater infrastructure is budgeted for the intersection of Hickory Trail and Wax Martel, and we also have replacement of portions of the existing multi-use path along Duck Road from Hillcrest North, budgeted at $335,950, and this includes a $91,000 grant offsetting that cost from the tourist bureau. Public Works is up $212,845, primarily to capital outlay for a new flail mower. Fire is, fire, this next year would mark the town's first year incorporating fire services as a municipal department. The town's benefited tremendously since the early 80s from the existence and service of the Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department. This move is predicated mainly on the, the need to offer town benefits and salaries because it's getting harder and harder to respond with volunteers. While the number of volunteers is declining across the country, every effort will be made to ensure that volunteers remain the backbone of the department. The recommended budget includes salaries and benefits for a chief, deputy chief, assistant chief, four captains, one full-time administrative assistant, and one part-time administrative assistant. The increase in sanitation of 51, almost $52,000 is because of the current, it's based on the contract price, and ocean rescue went up $8,000 because of that contract price. And I think it's worth noting that the present contract with ocean rescue will expire in December of '26. Personal, personnel merit funds are budgeted at $75,000. Coal is recommended at 3% based on the January CPI, and this is budgeted at $86,719. The mandatory town contributions for the state retirement system have gone from 13.88 percent to 14.37 for general employees, and 15.10 to 16.15 for law enforcement officers. Our, we had an untenable rate increase for health insurance that forced HR director to go out and shop for other plans. We met today with staff to discuss those options. There will now be two plans for employees to choose from. One's a traditional plan or a high deductible plan with a gap plan, and both plans cost the town similar premiums, with the high deductible and gap plan only an additional $10 per month. So in 2324, health insurance cost us annually $18,587. We're budgeted next year at $22,218. The town provides a cafeteria plan to offset the costs of dependent health. We're recommending it go from $725 to $750, and several new positions, as I mentioned, are part of the recommended budget. I believe I've mentioned, but you can see what the new organizational chart will look like. The positions in red are those recommended new positions, the additional police sergeant, public information officer, and then the departments that I just read in fire. Recent use of fund balance for one-time capital projects included the $1.7 million for the construction of the new Trinity Bridge. Recommended budget is balanced with the use of unassigned fund balance of $277,395. The remaining, after this year, the remaining unassigned fund balance will hold $1,787,326, and that is in addition to the 3.5 million that you earmarked by policy for disasters. The recommended budget will be posted on the town's website tomorrow and available for inspection at town hall by contacting town clerk Sheila Kane. And the public hearing to receive citizen comments and feedback on the recommended budget is scheduled for June 3 at 5:30 PM here in the Pitt Center. That concludes my report.
So.
You got a lot to digest.
If, so if anyone, any property owner here in town wants to know what their new tax bill will be, they can contact staff and ask that question, right?
That's correct.
You, you presented some examples in your presentation tonight, so there's that to go off, but if you want to know what your bill will be from the town, that doesn't address what the county part of your tax bill is, because you got two parts to your tax bill.
I suggest anyone that has that question can call town hall and either ask for Bonnie or myself.
Counsel, does anyone have, excuse me, does anyone have questions for Cliff regarding the budget presentation?
Not at this time.
We've, we've spent a lot of time talking with Cliff and staff about the budget. We, we also have spent parts of at least once a quarter meetings during, I mean, excuse me, during town, regular town council meetings, we've had budget updates. That was something that we asked the town manager to do. So I feel like as a counsel, we stay pretty closely in touch with the town's budget. So I think that's the reason that we're all sitting here going, nah, we don't really have any questions, because we've kind of gone through it.
And we had a workshop.
And we had a workshop.
We, we had a workshop open to the public.
Right.
And a few people showed up. I think that was really important, and everything is transparent here. I think we've thoroughly gone through it, and I, I think there was a lot of give and take, back and forth, and we do have one big change this year, which is the fire department. But this, you know, based, my opinion, based, you know, all the municipalities that are in Dare County, we have Lena Staff. in Derrick County, we have Lena Staff still. We have the lowest tax rate still, to our knowledge, and what, we don't know what the other guys have done yet, but the other municipalities have posted yet. And we're trying to do everything we can to give the citizens the best bang for the dollar that they're paying in taxes and to keep them safe with the police department and to provide the right fire service. They have good streets to drive on, clean canals. We could go on and on, you know, but the town, the town mayor, the town is, you know, I think we've given this a very thorough thought. We're going to be very interested in what our citizens have to say about it because we all pay the taxes.
That's right.
We all pay it, every one of us, yeah.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, I mean, if anyone listening or reads about this later, wants to contact me or any member of council, our emails and phone numbers are easily accessible. We're happy to answer questions as well as the staff. If you have a specific question about your property, I would go to the staff. I wouldn't trust my math. I would go, I would go to the staff for the right answer.
Just as an aside, I've chatted with a whole bunch of citizens in Southern Shores and talked about the tax increase and the reason for it. And, you know, Mark and I went over to the fire department and worked our way through the whole notion of going from a volunteer force over to having it a municipal force and then maintaining as much as we can the volunteer nature of the fire department. But that, if you look at the budget, that is a big chunk of, you know, the additional personnel costs that are there. But I would really like to commend Bonnie and the town manager, Cliff, the chief, Ed Limbacher and Malin from the, in essence, the nonprofit organization who we contract with. We spent a bunch of mornings from 7:30 until 9:00 in the morning going over this. And there's more little details that you have to be very concerned about to make the transition on July 1. So when you kind of explain that to citizens, they understand it. Does anybody like to pay additional taxes? No, but there's been, think about all the other bills that you have that have gone up since 2012 and where there are no tax increases since 2012. So there's nothing gold-plated in the budget. It's the things that local government does, as Mark ably stated a little while ago. So that's kind of a layman's point of view of, you know, the budget. And I think the increase is pretty reasonable. And that one chart that you have, if you wanted to show it on a monthly basis and just kind of estimate between all of those values of your homes, you'd get a pretty good idea of the increase.
Well said, Rob. I don't like raising taxes. Thought we were going to do it five years ago. We held it off. One of the reasons we've held it off is because of our volunteer fire department, which has saved the town millions of dollars. And now they're asking us to support them, and this is the way we can do it. And I'm happy to do it as an individual taxpayer, as a property owner and as a councilman. So thanks, everybody, for everybody's work. And sorry this has to coincide. Everybody wants to pay less, but sometimes, everything in this budget is tied to a service that's delivered. And that's what I'm proud of in our local government because you don't see it in some of the others. Thank you.
So we'll have a public hearing in June at our regular town council meeting. And anyone can sign up to speak during that public hearing. But again, if you don't want to wait until June, feel free to contact us and let us know what you think. This is, we're not going to vote to adopt any budget tonight. That will be, that will be in June is when we will take that vote. So without further discussion, I think we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, the public hearing will be June 3, 2025, 5:30 PM. Sheila gave me this note, make sure I said that. Okay. The next new business item is number seven, which starts on page 56 in your books, council. And I think Lauren is going to introduce this topic of housing legislation.
Yes, thank you. So I was asked, Cliff emailed and asked that we give a kind of a summary about this House bill and how it could impact the town. And so I can be as general or as specific as you would like. I think I'll just try to be general, hit the highlights and give you a summary. And if you have any questions, let me know. You had the legislative summary and the proposed House bill in your agenda packet. If you had the opportunity to work through that very tedious House bill, you would have noted that it is a very expansive attempt to really limit local government's ability to do any sort of regulatory zoning. It really impacts a lot of what 160D did when it was adopted several years ago. I think that primarily, one of the, one of the good things from the House bill, say, is that it does address the downzoning that was adopted previously. So if you recall, there was a downzoning amendment to 160D 601, which really expanded the restriction against the local government from being able to regulate uses within certain zoning districts. This House bill will correct that and narrows it specifically to changing the use, excuse me, in a zoning regulation rather than a zoning district. So if you have like a, in regards to the zoning map, you can regulate uses on a zoning map, but if there's any sort of limitation on uses in a zoning regulation, it keeps that prohibition. So it still narrows the town's ability to make some changes within the zoning regulation as it relates to permitted uses, but it's not as broad as it was before. So that's probably one of the more positives from this bill. I think that going through, if there were a lot of changes as it relates to nonconformities, as it relates to vested rights, it also put some pretty specific time restrictions on the period for the town staff and boards to do reviews of applications and also put penalties related to that. Timelines as strict as 14 days to review an application and say it's complete, 90 days to review to approve or disapprove. And if you do not do it within 90 days and follow that timeline, it is summarily approved and you can do nothing about it as the town. There is an extension that can be permitted, but the applicant has to agree and you can only go up to six months. So those kind of timelines are concerning for some of the more intensive applications that sometimes come through, particularly on a commercial nature. And so that's just something else to note. In regards to another, I think, provision that really jumped out to me in relation to Southern Shores was regulating density. There is a, almost very, very restrictive about how density can be legislated by the local governments. And so that would have a pretty severe impact. There's changes to the definitions of lot, acre, a lot of things that would impact the regulations that the town has in regards to calculating lot coverage and appropriate lot size, lot size and what's a lot of record. So this, just generally, this proposed House bill would have a substantial impact on the town's, not only your regulatory authority, but just in regards to how we would have to amend the ordinance to come into compliance with this House bill. Another item that is pretty, that's drawn a lot of attention is that the, the House bill expands liability against board members. And so it provides that there can be gross negligence, wrongful conduct. It also provides that board members can be listed individually. And that's a pretty, pretty substantial change. Now, it's in regards to very specific things such as fraud or if you acted in like a criminal nature, but it still puts that, that language in the House bill. And that is something that the board just needs to be aware of. There's some other regulatory changes that could impact, for instance, preliminary and final plat approvals. We have a pretty detailed process in Southern Shores about how preliminary and final plats for subdivisions come through. Those very restrictive time, review time limits apply to plat approvals. It also requires that plat approvals only be done by staff. So any planning board review of plats by this House bill is removed. So there's a lot of things that would impact the town's ability to kind of have review and other input, planning board input, which is a big, serves a big role here in Southern Shores. So there's a lot that could impact. So I say all that, but what I will say is it's still really early in the process, right? And so it's not adopted yet. These changes have not been made. If they are made and when changes are made, I think it's inevitable, changes will be made. A lot of the changes in this House bill, not a lot, some, are cleanup, you know, changes. Some, let's reorganize this and make it read a little bit better and make the language consistent. So not every change in here is a terrible impact, but if and when the changes come down, we can revisit how this impacts Southern Shores and review again about what changes may need to be made, how we might need to change our procedure and things like that. And particularly in regards to any kind of individual liability exposure, we can revisit that as well. So it is early in the process. That's not applicable right now. And so we can review that. But ultimately, what I will tell you is that this House bill has drawn a lot of attention from every town, county, city across the state. And I believe that the resolution in your packet is reflective of that. You're kind of getting the call from the league and the association and all, everyone's kind of all hands on deck, attempting to share their concerns regarding this House bill and drawing attention to how much we need our local representatives to pay attention to this. So that's the resolution in your packet. If you have any questions or have any specific questions about any of the provisions, be happy to go into further detail, but those were the ones that really stood out to me.
Thanks, Lauren. Council, do you have any questions for Lauren or do you want to do some discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Have you seen the definition that came out of the committee version today?
Today?
Yeah.
No. Which definition?
The actual and legitimate needs of the community.
No, I did not see the one that came out of committee today.
Instead of health and safety and welfare that we typically rely upon or, no, I don't want to, I don't need to surprise you with anything, but it's, I'm just curious your comment on that. And then the new, the new text is significantly edited. Some of the conflict of interest is gone, thankfully. It looks like we're exempted from some of the density requirements. The ADUs are still in there. Parking is still in there. Still work to be done, but it's getting to be a more palatable product for us as a town. So I think we should continue the pressure to our local legislators, our state delegation legislators to, we don't need to be on opposing sides of this. I mean, we all want housing affordability. The county's been working heavily towards it. Myself has been working heavily towards it. But at the same time, a lot of y'all have moved to this town for a lot of reasons about the character and nature of it. And some of those zoning determinations are best made at the local level. And that, what I think was first so offensive potentially in this bill was not only was it trying to take that away, but it was trying to punish us for attempting to exercise it. And it's an abrogation of authority. And I've written several different versions of letters and I got all my anger out of me. So now it's catharsis time and I'm trying to work for a better bill rather than just reject it. But it is on the horizon. It's something all of our citizens should pay attention to.
Yeah, I will say that there's definitely a lot of activity at the legislature because in addition to this House bill, there's probably dozens, at least a dozen more potential pieces of legislation that are being introduced that essentially want to strip municipalities of planning and zoning authority. And I just really feel like, you know, the primary purpose of our local government is to provide public health and safety in the way, and this, the ability to do planning and zoning supports that, that public health and safety mission of our town. So this just, it really is something we need to continue to work on.
I just, go ahead. Number of years ago, there was a whole notion, what they called devolution, where they were getting decision-making power back to the lowest level of government. This seems to be something, there is a centralization of decision-making power at the state level. I encourage citizens of Southern Shores, if you like the notion that we can control our own destiny with our own zoning, to contact your local state representatives and say that, heck, we like this notion of being able to determine which way we want to go as a community, especially regarding zoning and density.
And I would just reiterate, the concept of one size fits all statewide is really what's at heart here because some of the efforts, and I actually applaud the legislature for putting housing so forefront because it is one of the major issues for next generation, us raising kids in town. I mean, the idea of ascertaining property here is, it's pretty hard for a young adult, but many of the measures that are being contemplated will not lower housing affordability or increase housing affordability. It'll lead to greater housing and greater market share for potentially rental housing. And it specifically strips our ability to even manage that in some ways. So there's, the goal is admirable and I'm in support of it. Hopefully isn't my truck going off, but.
No, that's.
I'm in support of the goal and I would, I would fight tooth and nail to fight for that goal, but I don't think that this is the best vehicle to achieve it. And it just exemplifies the importance of local control over this decision-making. And I don't think Southern Shores, our planning department is the most efficient and fast on the beach and turning around permits. And I will brag about them till I'm blue in the face and it's three of them. I never wait on inspector. I can file a building permit, expect to get it in three or four days. Sorry to hold you to that West, but he's that fast. Even if I'm thinking it's 14 days, he's going to have it back to me in four days. We do, we are not participating in the problem. And I think we're actively discussing it with the entry corridor committee, the housing task force. We're seeking solutions for this problem. And I think that's the message if you want to contact the legislators. We're, we want to be part of the solution. This is it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want anybody to think that we don't want to increase housing affordability. We definitely want to make, do anything we can here in Southern Shores to support that effort. Matt and I have both been a part of the housing task force and subcommittees therein. And, you know, we just need some time. Just give us some time to, to, to move forward. I also would like to think that maybe sometime in the future, we could, you know, have more potential use of public money partnered with private money in order to increase housing for, especially for public employees. We would like that, that right to do, to do, to use the money in that way. So if we're done, I would like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution in opposition to HB 765 and similar legislation to strip municipalities of planning and zoning authority. That is my motion.
I didn't say anything, but so moved.
I have one question before we vote. I'm in full support of the resolution. I do think some of it is already outdated. Do we care or do we, is it better to get on record?
I think, I think, I think we need to just go ahead and adopt it. And I mean, I guess the similar legislation sort of phrase kind of catches, but you're right, some of the bullets may not be applicable, but I think it's still, it allows us to make a statement.
It's still in committee too. It's going to change every day.
It's going to change.
It's going to change every day.
It's in committee.
Yeah. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. We have adopted the resolution. Thank you. Okay. Council business. Council business. Who wants to go first? Mark?
Okay. I think you guys can read the Outer Banks voice and everything else on the tour board. And it's an unusual year again. Occupancy is down. I think you guys know that, that some of the rental companies are running specials and, but meals are up. So the good news is, is maybe there are not as many people here, but those that are here are eating. So, but the tour board is promoting like crazy. Had a very successful car show this past weekend and the events, we have a record number of events that we're funding, helping to fund, the tour board is, and so we'll kind of keep our fingers crossed. I do know that unfortunate events are making some of our neighbors to the north cancel their trips down here. But, you know, hopefully they'll have a, different folks will fill those voids that are coming down there. And I think you guys can read everything that Lee Nettles is saying. You know, a key feeder market for our area is DC metro area. And so things are kind of in turmoil there without getting into anything else. So we're doing everything we can to get folks here, which helps us to, which is a major source of revenue for the town, is what it is, plain and simple. That's it.
Thank you, Mark. Matt?
I've got a couple of announcements. The, the entry corridor committee has completed their survey and I reviewed it with one of our members at the end of last week and we intend to make it live this week. And this is a survey for all property owners to get a sense of how they use our commercial district and how we can better enhance it and provide guidance to our commercial property owners. And we are going to make that live and announce it via newsletter, which I need to coordinate with staff. Wes asked me for the address for the website. I needed to clarify that with one person. So that will be going out within the next day or so. And then we will try to follow that up with a town hall type meeting for the end of May. And we're game planning that on May 13th, which is our next entry corridor meeting at 9:15 AM. And we're not certain about the date yet, still it's just mayor and our travel schedules, but I think the goal is end of May. I'm trying to do all this without putting too much burden on staff and I got to really appreciate Wes's efforts, Cynthia's efforts to get the little website up. That's where the survey will be housed. We're going to distribute posters and mailers next week to go out. I'm going to tape up the posters to local businesses and whatnot. And really excited about it. One of our members, Michael Zaner, is very experienced in this and has done a lot of work on the survey and I appreciate all his efforts. I had another member send me some great stuff just yesterday that I've still got to go through. So I feel guilty sometimes. It's sort of like a side project, but at the same time, it's, we got a good group of people and I'm thankful for them supporting us and I'm excited to get the survey out.
After Memorial Day?
No, it'll be this week.
Before Memorial Day?
Yeah. The survey will be out this week. It's ready. I just need to coordinate with Wes. He, it's my fault really. I've been dragging the chain. And we're going to run it for about 30 days. It's not a hard end date, but we, we want to try to, we want to open the door for as much feedback as possible.
Thanks, Matt. Rob?
There's, at the county level, I attended a couple of meetings with what they call the anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. It's kind of known as eight, 250. So that's next year, 4th of July next year. And there's going to be a whole host of activity in the county to celebrate that, that are going to involve everything from K through 12 education. There will be a trail of historical sites, so the history society and the history people are putting it together and trying to get in 13 Skyline Drive is one place in Southern Shores since the flat top is quintessentially, you know, part of Southern Shores' history. And so there's a whole host of efforts to promote this at the county level and getting people involved. The, in addition, there's the 50th anniversary of Jackie's Ridge that's coming up. And I think a flyer was put up on the website. There's a whole bunch of activities, including a drone show. So if you want to attend, just go out to the website and look. You have to apply for tickets. Tickets are free, but once they get to a certain level, they cut them off. And I've just been kind of a little, talked to the mayor and a couple of other people, nosing around a little bit and seeing what kind of towns and municipalities in the state of North Carolina have solar panels or some sort of green energy on their buildings. And several of them do. And so I think it's, let me see, I have it right here someplace, but there's a whole host of things that we need to look, I think, look for in the future. Durham has it, Greensboro, Morrisville, and Fayetteville. And they even have it on fire departments and they can say, fire department buildings and they can defer up to $300,000 in engine costs. So something in our long-term planning, I think we need to address. And if there's, you know, some sort of other construction, we've got pretty good sun angle here, we may want to potentially consider it.
Thanks, Rob. So I'm just going to do my short list here. Our next meeting is June 3. Memorial Day celebration is Monday, May the 26th, at the Southern Shore Cemetery at 8:30 AM. Mayor's chat will be here at the Pitt Center on Wednesday, May the 14th at 5:00 PM. Come one, come all. We'll have staff here to make sure that, instead of me trying to give all the answers and possibly not getting them right, staff will make sure that all the answers that you get will be the correct ones. And we have two very special individuals in our community that have recently been honored with the governor's volunteer of the year recognition. They are Len Schmitz, our beach grass phenomenon that we have recognized here at town hall, and also Mr. Dale Draper with the ICO. He's a 20-year volunteer with that organization, Interfaith Community Outreach Organization. And those two individuals both just recently got recognized. So yay to Southern Shores people. I want to give just a huge thank you to our planning board. I don't thank the planning board enough. So tonight, I would like to just say thank you to all the planning board members for all of your persistence, your patience, your commitment to doing the best job that you can for our community. Can't thank you enough. Thank you to our planning board. That's it, I believe. Now we need a motion to go into closed session as per NCGS 143-318.11A3 for attorney-client privilege.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. We are in closed session. Thank you.